I'd like to call this meeting to order and to officially welcome our guests from Bolton, United Kingdom. We have Mayor Linda Thomas, and I'm not sure, Mr. Sylvester, what your title is.
It says councillor. We're called councillors over here.
Ah, thank you so much. I'm gonna turn the floor over to you, Mayor Thomas.
Okay, well, good evening Bolton, and warm greetings from fellow Boltonians from Lancashire in the northwest of England and the United Kingdom. As Mayor of Bolton, I wish to extend to you congratulations on celebrating your town's terceantenary since incorporation. And knowing that your town was named after Bolton in Lancashire back in 1720 makes me delighted and very proud to be able, as the first citizen of Bolton, to extend warmest regards and best wishes from Bolton Metropolitan Borough Council and all our citizens to all of the Bolton, Connecticut townsfolk. Sadly, our lives are very different today due to the pandemic affecting both our towns. But it's such a shame for you because you've had to curtail the festivities. No doubt, the pandemic permitting, next year you can have an absolutely spectacular 301st anniversary. You should have by now received from us the commemorative scroll featuring the coat of arms from both our towns and a series of Bolton elephants and Lancashire roses. And I do hope you like the scroll, and I know that it's sent with all our very best wishes to you. With a different size of population and being on different sides of the Atlantic, we may on the surface appear very different, but we do have similarities, like your proximity to Manchester, Connecticut, and ours to the city of Manchester, which is about half an hour away. This city is part of the makeup of what we refer to as the Greater Manchester Combined Authority, which as one of the, the city is one of the 10 local authorities like ourselves, make up this local government combined authority. However, I'm suitably informed by my fellow colleague and friend, councillor Richard Sylvester, who has visited your town and helped continue the friendship between our towns, that you are an extremely welcoming, friendly community, which is something we also pride ourselves on. We were once dubbed as the friendliest town in the UK. Councillor Sylvester is actually our globe trotting councillor, and he visited, I think he just mentioned earlier, about six years ago, after some students from Bolton High School, Connecticut, visited our town, staying with pupils at Rivington and Blackroad High School in his ward of Horwich. They visited our town hall, and we hope that once the virus subsides, that more pupils and people from Bolton, Connecticut, may wish to visit in the future. Local government is very much the backbone of communities. We deliver schools, support for vulnerable children and adults. We run libraries, sports centres, swimming pools and parks. We're responsible for highways and waste collection, the police and the fire. And it would be good to be able to exchange our experiences and knowledge in order to learn more about each other's work, culture and towns over the coming years, and forge further links between our students, obviously all virtual at the moment. My claim to fame is being the first virtual digital Zoom mayor. So it's, it's good to look forward to a time when human interaction can be back on the agenda. And so we look forward to a time when perhaps our townsfolk can develop our friendships further. So it just left to me to say congratulations once again, and look forward to a long friendship between our two great friendly towns of Bolton. All the very best to all of you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for those heartfelt words. I truly believe that we are twins. We both have women leaders at this point, and I think we are very, very similar. Since you began speaking, Mayor Thomas, our former first elected who, councillor Sylvester, has met Bob Mora, has joined us. Bob, did you want to say hello?
I just want to say, so great to hear from the other side of the pond. And I have to say, I thoroughly enjoyed the last visit with your, with your former mayor. Wonderful, wonderful, wonderful time, a great exchange of ideas. And I have to tell you that my wife and I have planned to visit there this coming year. We may have to go to 2022, but we are, we are certainly hoping we can come there and visit you. All I know is my visit with, with your former mayor was just wonderful. And, and I think the relationship between our two communities is something well worth working on and looking forward to. Well, I'm so glad that we were able to speak this evening.
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much, Mayor Thomas, councillor Sylvester. Your package did arrive, by the way. The scroll is beautiful and will be displayed tomorrow on social media, so that all of our townspeople can enjoy its beauty as well. So thank you so much on behalf of all of our citizens. This truly means a lot to us. So I will let you go about your early morning business, and thank you so much.
No, it's lovely, lovely to meet you all, and thank you for inviting us. And have a good meeting and have a, have a festivity that is appropriate, but I do hope you enjoy.
We will share photos when we do have it.
Oh yeah, please do, please do. Good night, good night. Please hold.
Please hold.
My video, just so you guys are aware, my connection keeps cutting in and cutting in and out. And you froze like multiple times during that last thing. So if I get lost, I will call in and come back. So if I disappear, I will be right back.
Okay. Excuse me. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Do we have anyone on the call who wishes to comment? I'm only showing nine callers on the call. Is that correct, Josh? 10, including me.
Yes. And it appears that Bob Di Pietro might be here twice, but that's just me. That his audio is all plugged in, so don't worry about that, Bob.
Okay. All right. Next on the agenda is approval of the minutes of October 6th.
Go ahead and share these so everybody can take a look.
There are no changes from what you sent out earlier, Josh, is there?
That's correct.
Okay.
Is there a motion to accept these minutes?
I didn't read them before. I didn't see anything, so.
Yeah. I didn't see anything either. Is there a second to that motion? Thank you, Bob. So it's been moved by Bob Mora, seconded by Bob Di Pietro to approve these minutes. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Kim, did we lose you?
No, no, I'm here. I said aye, sorry.
Okay, all right. So that is four in favor. Thank you. Next is the minutes of... And of course.
October 15th, emergency meeting.
The emergency meeting, thank you.
Now, sure, I'm over the acceptance as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
And it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bob Di Pietro, did you vote?
Uh, not vote yet. I'm trying not to think why I abstained.
Bob, I know that at that meeting you were having trouble with your video and your audio. I'm not sure if, because you had been out of the room at that time, listening back on the station, you did in fact abstain, and I'm wondering if it was because you hadn't been privy to all of the points in the conversation.
Thank you.
That is my recollection. Do you want that added to the minutes, Bob?
Or do, how do you do that?
We would just, before we accept them, we would just say abstaining to Pietro as he was unable to participate in the discussion.
Okay, yes. And I'll modify my, I'll modify my motion to include that. Thank you. Yes.
Yvonne, did you get that? Josh, will you follow up with her tomorrow and make sure?
I will.
Thank you.
I will make note of it right now.
Thank you.
All right. All those in favor of approving the minutes of Thursday, October 15th, as corrected, please say aye.
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 Aye. That's unanimous. I don't believe we have any appointments tonight. Is that correct, Josh?
We do not, no.
Okay. Correspondence. We've received the correspondence from Mayor Thomas and the scroll. I believe you've seen, all seen her letter. It's, it is posted on Facebook, so you can find it there if you choose to look. And I'm assuming it's also available on the town website.
It's actually not at this point, but I will make it so tomorrow.
Okay, great. There's a famous saying in my accounting office that it'll be true in 10 minutes.
Yeah.
Subcommittee reports. I don't believe we have any at this time. Properties and facilities. Josh?
Yes. If, for those of you who are following along in the packet, it's, I've just listed it as number seven because we have a couple of reports that I've had the chance to write down so that we can refer to them later again in this text form. From John Buttermovich, he wanted to let everybody know that regarding the tennis courts at Bolton High School, they have installed the lights, fencing and the base coats. All that's left is the gates lines and net hardware. That's an update that he sent to me yesterday, and on the phone today, he said he believed that it was done. That being said, they would be closing the tennis courts in about a week's time due to the weather and, and just it being winter anyways. And he'll be having discussions with the school about whether or not, well, to what extent they needed to be open for the remainder of this season. And that's all I have for properties and facilities.
Any questions? The tennis courts do look great.
They're beautiful.
Next is open space. Josh, can you give us a quick?
I can, I can give a quick overview. For those of you who, again, are following along, there's a separate document that outlines, well, a few points from Gwen Marion and others, Brent Meyerson in this case, about the Nathan Hale corridor. And essentially, they've been doing a lot of work to try and make the Nathan Hale corridor a viable path, a viable greenway for folks to be able to really start to use now that we've acquired this space and a lot of planning has gone into it. They're proposing the following steps and want to run it by the Board of Selectmen so that you all have an understanding of what their hope is, and so that I can get a little direction in helping to facilitate as we move forward. They're proposing that myself, the Highway Department and members of the Trail Committee and folks who have been working on identifying a path for this trail, meet at the trailhead to really discuss what, what path it is that they're suggesting be implemented. If a trailhead location is agreed upon, they're hoping to be able to come to the next Board of Selectmen meeting to talk about this very specific area so that it might be confirmed as a trailhead. And once that happens, there'll be a walk on the property with someone from the town to confirm, again, the permanent trail location, and they'll be working with us to figure out how to blaze a trail in a very safe, of course, manner. So really, what needs to be confirmed by the Board of Selectmen is there's an area, I believe, on Route 6 that is owned by the town, that has been proposed as the trailhead, and I haven't, I don't have the information in front of me to be able to share with you tonight. But I'm hoping that in the next month I can compile that for you, that I can even offer anybody who wants to take a socially distant walk out there, I would, I would have the chance to show you over these next few weeks. So that you can see an area that they're proposing, we turn into parking so that folks can go and really use this space as the hiking and biking trail that it, we're very much hoping will come to fruition.
Josh, have you had a conversation with Lance about that proposed parking area?
We have. The concern from the Highway Department so far has been actually with the Department of Transportation. Lance was concerned that there isn't enough of a sightline as you come out of that space to be able to make it a really viable parking lot for a lot of cars to be able to come in and out of. But I've had conversations with a few individuals at DOT that don't believe that it's as much of an issue as, as Lance's more conservative approach to the matter might suggest. So I can try and get something in writing from DOT to, to really try and make sure that you have all the facts and information in front of you at the next meeting, and, and that's exactly what I would want to do. But I, I do know that there are a couple of concerns just about the sheer volume of traffic on Route 6.
Yeah, I mean, the, the location really is, the issue is a safety issue, entry and exit. So it would be good to have that information to make a, you know, a viable decision. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Yep. Is there anybody on the Board of Selectmen who is concerned about anything else other than the safety issue from coming out on Route 6 there?
My only question is, what is that property used for now? It's staging area, but do we need it or do we not?
No, no. It was, it was used as a staging area many years ago when they did some widening and repaving of, of the Route 6 area to make some of the intersections less dangerous.
Okay, so now it's just nothing?
Now it's just nothing and...
Yeah, but it's leveled and it's have a gravel. I mean, it's, it's, it's basically sort of an unfinished parking area that's sort of grown in. But that's why it was, you know, somewhat of a logical type location since it had, had been used by, by DOT for that purpose, a staging area and had a box and everything going in and out of there.
Okay.
But in terms of usability, I, I mean, it's, it's really one day's work with the Highway Crew down there, and they would have it in tip-top shape for...
Okay, well, Josh, let's go ahead and go reach out to DOT and see if you can get something, even if it's just an email that says they have no concerns over exit onto Route 6 right there. And I think we'll need to get the Trails Committee together and do a walk of the area so that we're all comfortable with discussing it before our December meeting. And if we have to postpone it till January, if the weather turns on us, so be it. Not many people will be using it in the meantime, I don't think, so.
Very good.
All right, moving on. Lower Bolton Lake report, which...
We have a written report in from Kim Welch, the Lake Commissioner, and four key items. First, the lake drawdown has begun. The water level of Lower Bolton Lake is approximately one foot below its normal level at this time. So it's expected that the water level will be lowered another six inches to establish the desired water level for the winter season. Traditionally, if it, if the water table really is high at this time of year, we would be drawing it down up to 18 inches. So, so this is modified to adjust for the drought that we're experiencing. The steep funds from CT Deep, well, not, that are managed by CT Deep, expire at the end of this calendar year, and the remaining balance of the funds are being used to, for a variety of different purposes, but they're being used to purchase equipment and also being used to kick off the funding of a Bolton Lakes Watershed Management Plan, which is something that I know has been an aspiration for many years, actually by the friends of Bolton Lakes, but for everybody who's been associated with the management of this body of water. The plan will allow the town and the Lake Association to apply for grant funds for future lake-related projects. There are some federal sources of funding that require the Watershed Management Plan already be adopted before applications can be made. So NEAR is leading on both of these tasks, and it's going along as well as I expected. And I think that we're on track to finish before the calendar year is done with no problem. I do have confirmation from DEEP that as long as payments are made before the end of the calendar year from that fund, it, it doesn't really matter how long the project takes after that. So, but, but even so, I'm confident that we're on the right track. Steering Committee's been formed to establish a Bolton Lakes Watershed Management Plan. Really, this is just a couple of individuals from the four towns that are involved within the watershed. And, and we have yet to have a meeting where Coventry and Tolland have been included, but Vernon has been a very active player so far in these conversations. And I, I know that we have representatives identified from Coventry and Tolland who will be joining us in the near future. The loggers to monitor the water levels of Middle and Lower Bolton Lake have been purchased and installed near the shoreline of private property on both lakes. Monitors will log the water level hourly, and the data will be collected via Bluetooth to an app and downloaded to be analyzed by NEAR and Lake Association volunteers going forward. So all of these, I think, are great strides towards continued management even after the steep funds expire. And of course, once these steep funds expire, we will have an opportunity with the next round of steep funding to put in a new application. So that's something that I hope that we have the chance through this board to, to really discuss and think about. But that's what I have from Kim, or sorry, from Kim Welch.
Thank you, Josh. Next are the budget reports for this year.
So first, here, the cash report. Actually, this isn't something that you usually take a look at. So I'll skip over to the collection summary report, which you're a little more familiar with. And as you can see right now, with the current year collection, we're at about 98% of the amount that we expected to have. And that's as of the end of October, and we're at 89.4% of our motor vehicle levy. So all of, we're collecting at a, at a rate that is very favorable to us. I know that we did receive in the last two weeks our first, sorry, our first shared services grant with the state for the education cost sharing, the ECS grant. So I know that Jill had a big sigh of relief when we saw that come on in and clear. As for the expenditure report, this is for the current fiscal year now that, that, or past, that's the November timeframe. I'll only be showing you the fiscal year 21 until we see that, that audit report, which will still be a couple of months more. But as usual, or actually, as we started last month, I've identified two different colors for you. The first being in the yellow, which is budgets that are both over 33.3% expensed and are over expended compared to the past three fiscal years. And then now in gray, we have fixed annual costs, items that you really shouldn't concern yourself with because there are set times when those funds are to be expended, and it's already pretty set in stone to what extent those will be spent. So as you can see, we're all gray this month and no yellow. That's possibly one of the best months yet. We're right now at 29.3% expensed, and that's across all departments. That's the average. And so we're, we're trending in a very positive direction considering the fiscal constraints we've been under. We did relax some of our directives, you know, working in hand and hand with Sandy to make this happen, to allow for more blanket purchase orders, to allow for some capital items to continue to move forward this month as compared to the last months now that we've had our, our tax levy really come in. And obviously, the tax collector still has a little more work to do to make sure that we're going to be 100% fine and dandy for this fiscal year. But I'm very confident with where we are, and, and I think that we have very good control over the way that we're spending money without being in any way unable to operate. I really don't think that this has impacted our operations in any visible way, although maybe, maybe just a couple headaches as we try and consider when and how we should be putting forward, like I said, those blanket purchase orders and capital items, but nothing that can't be overcome. So I happy to say that I think the fiscal state of the town is very positive right now.
Okay, thank you, Josh. Any questions on expenditures or revenues? All right. Josh, since we've lifted the prohibition on blanket purchase orders, have you been delused or is it been sort of business as usual?
We've had, I think, two or three come in.
Okay.
They're between us. There was one from the library. I think there was one or two from the Fire Department, and that's really been it. So we're, we're still have, I think, a very financially conscious mindset among the staff right now.
Great. Thank you for that info. Budget transfers and appropriation requests.
Yes. I have one proposed budget transfer for you all to consider tonight. And it's really more of an auditing matter than it is anything else or an accounting matter, I guess I should say. So right now, we have in our budget $6,300 that's been set aside for insurance waivers. These, this is money that goes to an individual, individuals around town staff who waive their right to health insurance. And we have a number of individuals who have decided to opt out of taking town health insurance this year, a couple more than we anticipated. And as Jill is diving, and as you know, we've been going through a year-long process, and it's going to continue of trying to really hone in on the uniform chart of accounts and the way that a lot of this should be reported back to the state. She believes it's in our best interest to create a separate line for these insurance waivers now that she's really taking a look at them, and they're starting to, to be expensed. And we, because individuals are waiving their health insurance, we have a little bit more... And we, because individuals are waiving their health insurance, we have a little bit more money in the health insurance line that we can transfer over to fund these waivers with no problem. So again, it's really not any new money that's being allocated for this purpose. It's just taking money from one account and moving it into really the correct line.
And I, I'd just like to comment that the ultimate result here is that when an employee opts out, it does re- excuse me, does result in savings overall to the town. Fairly significant after, even after they've been paid their, their waiver fee. So is there a motion to approve this transfer?
Sure. Oh, Kim did. I'll second it, Kim.
All right. So it's been moved by Kim Miller, seconded by Bob Mora. Any other comments or discussion?
Can I ask you one question? That's the total amount, right? That's not, we didn't pre-fund it earlier. We're just now splitting out the line. So this is the first thing and not all we're saying this year?
Correct. Jill can make a change in her accounting records for something that's already been appropriated and moved it, but this is the, this is additional money to go in there.
Okay.
And it's going into the new line, so. All right. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. Any other for tonight, Josh?
Um, I don't have any other ongoing business items to share with you.
Okay, all right. New business is to review the actions taken at the October fifteenth emergency meeting and confirm the decisions made. Since we've already approved the minutes.
Right.
I think we're done with this particular item. Do you disagree, Josh?
No, I, I think that's accurate. I just wanted to make sure that if anybody had items that they, you know, concerns, they had a place in the agenda where they could really voice them. It's, it's the FOIA Commission's recommendation that that happen after an emergency meeting.
Okay. So Yvonne, can you make sure the minutes say that we reviewed the actions taken and there were no objections to the minutes as corrected or amended or whatever we did to them?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I did hear the other one as well. I just couldn't get myself off mute.
All right. Thank you so much, Yvonne.
You're welcome.
Yes, we did, Kim. And I'm sorry for any disturbance that I caused with that, with my, my lack of knowledge on.
Uh-oh, I'm running out of battery, so. I have to plug in here.
I just have a question. Why, why does Kim have to be reappointed?
Because the town clerk said so.
Ever. It's because of you? Oh, okay.
It's in the charter. I thought we were gonna try to address that at the charter meeting, but.
The, at the, at the charter meeting, John, it, I read the charter with Liz Waters because I disagreed with her, kind of like Bob Mora. And she said that the charter says after an election, it doesn't specify municipal election. So if you, if you could, if you could bring that to the Charter Commission.
I'll do that Thursday.
Ask that they consider that that section be amended to say that it's
Municipal.
That it should, that following a municipal election, we need to appoint that, but.
Yeah, because every board I've been on for the last eleven years, we've had to do it every single year and I never saw the, the purpose of doing it. Because nobody, there was no new people. So. Let's see what happens.
And I happen to disagree with the town clerk and I think it's, it's her interpretation.
Yeah, that's, I can, I can see that interpretation. I mean, it does make sense.
To make everybody happy, Kim, I'll be happy to nominate you again for Deputy First Selectman completing this next calendar year, or yeah, calendar year.
All right, and I will second that. Any discussion?
Excuse me, Sandy?
Yes, ma'am.
I didn't quite hear what Bob Mora said, so he's.
Bob Mora nominated Kim as Deputy First Selectman for the twenty-twenty-one calendar year.
Thank you.
And I seconded that.
Thank you.
And I don't believe we've had any discussion yet.
She did such a fabulous job. It doesn't require discussion.
She was actually on two days this month.
There you go.
There you go.
So I was glad she was here. All right, all those in favor of Kim as Deputy First Selectman for the twenty-twenty-one calendar year, please say aye. Aye, that is unanimous. Thank you all. And thank you, Kim. Consider an act on a Board of Selectmen regular meeting schedule for the twenty-twenty-one calendar year. It is again the first Tuesday of the month. Typically, however, Bob Mora, you and I have been out of town the first Tuesday in January. That will not be my case this year. How about you?
Yeah, me neither.
Okay.
Not flying anywhere, so.
All right. Does anyone else have any concerns or issues with any of those dates?
You certainly don't have to worry about any basketball tournaments either, so.
Oh, that's true. That's true.
The only one I might have a conflict with is July sixth.
Ooh, that's Fourth of July week.
Yeah.
And it's not like I have a lot of, I have no work travel that I foresee at this point.
Okay, well, my suggestion is that we leave it as July sixth. And if it turns out we do not have a quorum, we can always have a special meeting. The only difference between a regular meeting and a special meeting is that we can't add things to an agenda after it's published of a special meeting. And we can't have anything on our agenda that just says other, so. We could easily move it and accomplish whatever we had to. So with that, is there a motion to accept the proposed dates for the Board of Selectmen for twenty-twenty-one?
The move.
Okay, it's been moved. Is there, and seconded by, moved by Bob DiPietro, seconded by Bob Mora. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that is unanimous. Thank you. All right, now, the next item is to consider an act on approval of a memorandum of understanding between the towns of Mansfield, Coventry, Tolland, and Bolton for the creation of a regional steering committee to implement the four-town economic vitality plan. Josh, can you pull that up, please?
Yeah, sorry, I just clicked the wrong button in my confusion.
Anybody clicking the wrong button. It's, they're all so close together.
Um, so I can tell you all that this is boilerplate language drawn up and has been shared with all of the member towns. And it's fairly short, fairly straightforward. They did, for whatever reason, put my title down as being the authorizing agent. But if you'd prefer Sandy, of course, we can, we can change that up and, and just have you be the author.
I, I don't have a problem with you being the signer here, as long as the Board of Selectmen has authorized it. I do have a question for you, Josh, and that's because I've had my head in the numbers and not paying a lot of attention to this. Does this create any financial obligation for us other than your time?
It does not create a specific obligation. There is a number three under, in the numbered section on this MOU does state that we are, or that we're all being asked to be willing to consider financially supporting the implementation of various recommendations. All of the recommendations that are placed in there, from my point of view, are fairly low cost with the exception of perhaps one or two items, including, I believe, in year two of this plan. So right now, I believe the rest of this calendar year is year zero. Year one beginning in January of this coming year and year two really being more towards fiscal year three. So a ways out, I believe that there is a proposal to hire a regional economic development director who would share twenty-five percent of their time between each of these towns. So that's probably an example of something that's a little more expensive that will be asked to consider. We are under no obligation to sign on to any of those items, however, and will have full discretion as, as a town to make those decisions as they come.
Thank you.
I think the term to consider
Yes.
is loose enough to because, you know, just for me, the thought of hiring another, you know, director, I really would have, that's one thing, I'd have to see some, some good firm data to think that that would be a of a financial benefit to the community.
I agree.
But to all the other communities. So anyhow, but that's, that's down the road. You know, that's, but it, I, this seems, as you say, pretty much boilerplate, doesn't commit us anything that fiscally, if we disagree with, we have to comply with. And Sandy, I concur with you on that. I think that's, that's a critical aspect.
Yeah, and as I said, I agree. All right, someone want to move to authorize Josh to execute this on behalf of the town?
Can I ask a question first?
Certainly.
I'm curious about time periods covered by this and also besides the time deadlines. I want to know more about what specifics are expected in the so-called plans. Will we have access to that kind of information?
Well, we have the plan.
Who?
Josh, did you send it to everybody?
Yes, it was sent, it was a couple of months ago, so I, I certainly don't blame you if it got buried in your email and you haven't had the chance to take a look at it, but I will certainly send it again. Actually, I can send it to you tonight. And there are two different documents. There's one that is very long. It's about ninety-some odd pages. Right, exactly.
The actual executive summary.
Yes, there is an executive summary. So I'll make sure I include that.
A lot of boilerplate.
Yes, I think that there's a very helpful Excel document, though, that was sent out that, and you can sort it in a few different ways, but if you look at it by year, it will tell you the hopeful milestones that this, this group, this, this regional body hopes to keep within each year following the adoption of the plan. So starting with this coming year as being year one.
I remember that email. Do you know what TMI stands for?
No worries, Bob. We certainly do. I can, I can, if you'd like, maybe come to the next meeting with a few key points for you to think about for this coming year. Just a short presentation on what we're going to be working on in the near future. I know that the next.
I love that. I love that.
Good. And also by that point, we'll have had a meeting of this group in its entirety. So I can share with you kind of the, the signals that I'm getting from other folks at the table and, and see really how well I think that this is going to work.
Great, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I thank you for that suggestion, Bob DiPietro. I think it's a great one. Because I actually read the entire ninety pages, but couldn't tell you what it said today. All right, now, we need a motion to authorize John, Jo, John Joshua to execute this on behalf of the Town of Bolton.
I'll move.
All right, Bob DiPietro moved. Is there a second? Kim Miller seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I believe that's unanimous. Any opposed? Okay. Josh, you are hereby authorized to execute this on behalf of the Town of Bolton. Thank you. I'm not aware of any other in the line of new business, so we can move on to my report. I'm happy to report that our Sustainable CT Committee was notified this week that we have been awarded the bronze certification as a sustainable town in Connecticut. We are the smallest town in, in this year's class. And our award will be given virtually at the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities Convention in December. Right now, we don't know if we will be able to have people attend just the award ceremony virtually or not. As soon as we do find that information, I'll share it with you. In the meantime, if you are interested in participating in the CCM Convention, which is, I believe, December second, third, and fourth, totally virtually, let Josh know and we can get you registered. The Sustainable Connecticut Committee is meeting November sixteenth. Josh?
All right, that's, um, the bending committee's meeting in November, but the Sustainable CT Committee is going to meet the first Wednesday in December.
Oh, thank you. That's right. The first Wednesday in December. And we are going to get started on our silver certification. It typically takes a year to two years to pull together the actions and the reporting required for silver certificate. But the committee and Patrice did such an outstanding job that we are pretty well on our way, so. If the enthusiasm of the committee stays strong, which it has been, hopefully, we can be well on our way to silver next year. And right now, silver is the highest level that is awarded. They are anticipating a gold and platinum, but they haven't got there yet, so. Emergency preparedness. Excuse me. You may have noticed that last week Bolton went from a COVID-yellow town to a COVID-orange town. I think there is a fair chance that we may go to a COVID-red town this week. Our cases, as of yesterday, were fifty. We've had additional hospitalizations. But thank God, no additional deaths as of yet. The math to compute how a town becomes a stepped-up town is mind-boggling even for me. And I can't explain it because I haven't been able to recreate it on my own. But what they do is measure cases over a ten-day rolling average and then compare it to what would end up being, in our case, between ten and fifteen cases per hundred thousand residents. And since, per the State Board of Health, we have four thousand eight hundred and ninety people. No idea where that number came from, because only the Department of Health has it. No idea where that number came from, because only the Department of Health has it. You would take that, take our cases, and if it comes to more than 1.5 percentage, or 0.15% of our population on a rolling average, it would put us over. So if it's more than 0.16 of the population, which when you multiply that by 4,000, it's not a large number at all. It's like two or three cases per day, and we've been pretty close to hitting that. Near as we can tell, the transmission appears to be totally community-spread related to smaller social gatherings and smaller sporting events. So it doesn't appear to be spreading through a church, through a neighborhood, or anything of that nature. So I guess in some cases, that's good, but any spread is bad. So I think that's it for me unless somebody has questions.
Yeah, I've asked this before, and they probably have not done this, but one, one of the statistics that I, I think are really critical in this is what age group you know, are, are being impacted. Obviously, early on, we saw when UConn went back to school, and because of the social gathering and this, it was quite a spike. And also, it just, and this is anecdotal, I don't know if, if, if they do give us the, the age range of where this is happening. Is it in that, if you will, twenty to forty range? Is it in the, where Bob and I are in the slightly above that range?
Yeah, me too.
But, but do they give that? I mean, I haven't seen it anywhere.
I haven't seen that, Josh, have you?
Haven't seen it on the town level. I'm looking right now, though, and I can post this actually in the chat here for those of you who are watching on CBC or anything like that. We can post this on our town social media in the near future. But if you scroll down on this page, it will give you at least the number of COVID-19 cases by age group across the state.
Well, that gives you at least some concept.
Right, right, and it's, there's definitely a bit of a bell curve. I mean, that, that speaks to just how many people are in each.
Each group, right.
But I, I am guessing, from what I'm looking at right now, there's definitely a bump in the eighty and older group with probably statistically, if, if all things are equal, what should be there? And I'm guessing that's still residual from early on in, in this process when nursing homes were greatly impacted. And aside from that, the, the biggest singular group is the twenty to twenty-nine-year-old group, fortunately.
Okay.
UConn this afternoon announced a full quarantine of five dormitories. So that's a lot of people, so. Josh, you're up.
Thank you. So I will first talk briefly about some goals. Just want to let you all know that I have been working with a few different firms to get numbers and to hear a little bit more about what they can offer for us. But in terms of offering a retreat in an expectation-setting session with the supervisors' group, the extended leadership team, I believe that we have a firm that is going to really deliver on that. And, and from what they're telling me, I think that we have an opportunity to really have some great discussions facilitated within the town staff. And I'm hoping that that's going to be an excellent opportunity for all of us. I do also want to let you know that we're working with the same firm to get, my hope is two different diversity and inclusion training sessions set up. The first of those would be a more intimate conversation that would be up to twenty, allow for up to twenty-five individuals to take part in this smaller discussion and conversation. My thought is that that would include the leadership team amongst the staff and then the Board of Selectmen. So I will be reaching out to all of you in the near future to be able to take part in that and, and to talk to you about days and times that might work best. In order to get staff there, just a fair warning that this will probably be during business hours, so be thinking about that, but I will try and work with you as, to the greatest extent possible, to make it work with your schedules. The second diversity and inclusion session that I've been talking to different firms about offering is one that can be done as more of a webinar. It, it would be, I guess, a little bit more of a presentation style than a conversation, but that would allow us to broadcast it to anybody and everybody that we want. That would allow us to put it on Facebook Live, to really share this around with the Bolton community. And given conversations certainly that were started back in the summer and, and that we, I think as a group, are, are hoping continue, that would give us an opportunity to provide some training for free to residents of the town. So that's still more of a work in progress. That would likely be something that could happen either in mid-December or perhaps January. But please know that that is something that's on my radar. I am meeting this coming Thursday after a Unified Command meeting with Joe Mazzelli from the high school, who is going to come to the town hall once it's closed and talk to me about different pieces of equipment that we can purchase and bring into town hall. He's already given me an idea of some costs that the high school saw, and they're pretty reasonable. But that will allow us to livestream all in-person meetings going forward, and that was another one of my goals.
Oh, wow.
And at least give us the capability. And I, I'm very, I'm very grateful for his knowledge, first of all, but I think that he has some ideas on how we can do this with little expense overall. And, and hopefully will make it easy for us to set up, because I'm fairly tech savvy, but I'm definitely not a solely technical person, so.
You're not in the geek realm.
Compared to me, he is.
Yeah, compared, well, he's a genius.
I, I know that you've all had the chance now to, at, at least the chance to take a look at the personnel policies that I sent out, and I think, as Bob said before, TMI might have been something that flashed in your mind, but I am grateful to, to have it done. I'm hoping that you have the chance to take a look at it in the near future, and I know that the Human Resources Subcommittee, when it next meets, will, will probably want to dive right in. So glad to have that out to you. We'll be, we're starting this coming Wednesday, or sorry, this coming Monday, we will have a leadership team meeting where we will be starting to talk about and work on standard operating procedures for all of the different departments. My thought right now is that we are going to start with all of the departments drafting these items, and my goal of having 50% of them finished and implemented for the end of the year. I'll focus on those departments that already have a version of those standard operating procedures in place, so their goal will be to bring them to a level where they're uniform in nature and implemented. And the other departments will be trying to have a draft in place by June 30th. So that way, in the next fiscal year, we have 100% going and implemented. And I also want to let you all know that we have an opportunity, two different opportunities from UConn that we're trying to take advantage of, and they're free of charge to the town. There's, there's no financial implication. But first is, we have a team of UConn, young UConn engineers who are taking a look at town hall and are going to be drawing up a few different ideas as part of a class that they're working on for ways in which, and expansion onto town hall might be feasible. And I think this is a creative way to, for us to maybe get the conversation rolling as we go. You know, we're starting to look at the next fiscal year and, and might give us some ideas on, on how we might want to spring forward. And they will be fairly detailed. This is a senior final project for, for of these UConn students. And if anybody wants to meet them at any point in time, I'd be happy to make that introduction, and I'm sure that they're interested to hear from all of you, your, your historical perspective on this look. But the other item I wanted to share, and the last item that I'll share on this subject, is we're also working with UConn students who are also engineers, but really looking at storm water management. So they are coming to and have already done a site review of a number of different public facilities to look at the different ways in which our storm runoff is currently being managed. And they're going to be giving us a list of recommendations on improvements that could be done in the future to better mitigate storm water and better manage our water systems in an inexpensive way. So I'm, I'm glad that we have a few contacts over at UConn that were able to get us connected with these programs and that we have some ideas coming to us that would otherwise perhaps cost another town a, a bit of money who didn't have this resource at their disposal. So certainly trying to get integrated with the UConn community to the greatest extent possible. But, but off the subject of the goals and on to COVID, I, I, or emergency management in general, we are trending in the correct direction as far as the drought goes. So fingers crossed, I know that we're seeing a little more rain tomorrow, and hopefully that just keeps up. But in terms of COVID-19, the town staff, Jim and I are planning to do another announcement. We've been putting out a few emails over the past few weeks to remind folks about the simple things that I think with time just become inauthentic and, and get forgotten. So I think that there have been some good conversations around town hall about staying vigilant. I think that everyone's really doing their job. And it sounds like from at least the hearsay that I'm getting that folks are really having a safe mindset around the holidays as we approach them, so. Hopefully, I, that's that, and we continue to see numbers get a little lower in Bolton overall, not just with the staff, but with residents as well.
Josh, when you meet with your leadership team, are you going on one or together in a group? How do you do that?
The leadership team meetings themselves are the group settings. But as we've discussed, I have been making more of an effort to have those one-on-one conversations. Since we all last met, I have had the chance to have those one-on-one, a one-on-one conversation with each department head. And, and of course, regularly having, well, intermittent and as needed conversations when issues come up.
Good, good.
Yep.
With best.
Yes. Part, often on the phone or over Zoom, and we've been trying to use Zoom as much as possible to just try and put a face to everything if, if we get the chance in it, especially if it's a longer meeting. But folks have been pretty good about picking up a phone and not being afraid to call each other, which is good to see. The first few months, we definitely saw everybody's run to their, their emails, and, and we've broken out of that.
Good. Josh, while you're on the phone here, I want to ask a question. You know, my wife used to work at the seniors. Now, a lot of people still remember her and call her for what she has for insight to the future of the seniors under Handyman. Practice, you know, a lot of these seniors, we're getting there ourselves. We could use a Handyman. The product or outside work, what's the status of that?
Well, I, I don't want to say too much, because I know that Carrie has a, a solution in the works. But what I can say is that the current Handyman did resign out of fear of, of COVID. He, he didn't want to put himself in that position. And, and, well, there, there are a lot of considerations, and I think that there are a lot of folks just around the senior community that have been afraid to bring COVID into an environment like that, never mind receive it themselves. So it's certainly been an adjustment around that position, and Carrie's had a lot of time to think about how to best pursue this going forward. But we have grant funds at our disposal that can be used for, in, in a few different ways that she's devised. And I, I'm hoping that at our next meeting, I'll be able to tell you a full plan.
Good.
And, and how she can really reinstate and reinvigorate that program.
Thank you. It's pretty important.
Any other questions for Josh? Any other items from anybody on the board?
Oh, one question. Have we contracted out Enrico Rose?
Oh, thank you, Bob. Josh, did you hear that question on Enrico?
Moving forward, yes, and by our next meeting.
Yeah, I go by it every day. That's how it come. I just have to ask the question. Okay, thank you.
Josh, well, have, have you here? I've noticed a few of them go down Bolden Center Road towards 384, but there's a speed limit sign that says 40 miles an hour about 50 feet before a stop sign. When you talk the, the OT or where they're making it says to have a 40 mile an hour speed limit sign so close to a stop sign at the intersection. Do you all know what that is?
Do you know what, what intersection it is, Bob?
The one by the 384, you know, the.
It's where the exit is, it's where the four-way.
Okay, yes.
That's, oh, Bob, that's, DOT, that sign was there prior to the stop going in, and they never relocated it.
Right.
That, that's the issue. It probably, you're probably the first citizens that has actually brought it to anybody's attention that it makes no sense and you're dead on. It should be further back. And probably get the phone call to DOT, says, hey, you know.
Yeah, call over to the highway garage or.
Yeah.
Have some.
Relocate it, yeah.
You've got it.
Thank you.
All right, I think time for the famous motion.
Don't move. I'll move to adjourn.
Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thanks, everyone. Stay safe. See you soon.